This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and those of you online. I would like to, in council, I would like to call to order the Hasslet City Council's March 6, 2023. All members of the council are present in the chambers. At this time, I would ask that you bow your head and then join me in the pledge of allegiance. Father God, we thank you so very much, and I just want to say thank you for your creation. We have had beautiful nights these last few nights, and I was out gazing upon the stars and the moon, and it dawned on me, I was gazing upon the same stars and moon that Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob gazed upon. It felt so humbling, but again, I thank you for this wonderful creation you have made for us. In Jesus' name, amen. You stand with me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I always enjoy this next item, proclamations and presentations. We A is award presentation proclamation to the Hasslet Public Library. Ms. Turner?
Our library has been awarded an award, and I have a proclamation I'd like to make. I'm the mayor of Hasslet, Texas, proclaiming Tuesday, March 7, 2023, as Hasslet Public Library Day. For as public libraries play a vital roles in the education, recreation, and empowerment of our local community, for as each year, the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association confers the Achievement of Library Excellence Award for outstanding contributions to public libraries in Texas, for as the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association Achievement of Library Excellence Award is open to all the Texas Public Library Directors and the member libraries they represent, for as applicants must exhibit excellence by providing services to the underserved and special populations, marketing in innovative ways, pursuing collaborative effort, continually enhancing its services, supporting literacy, digital inclusion, and workforce development, providing cultural, topical, and educational programming, and comprehensively training its staff. Whereas of approximately 542 libraries that exist in Texas, only 73 received this award in 2022. Whereas the Hasslet Public Library has met the requirements of excellence and has been awarded the 2022 Municipal, Texas Municipal Library Directors Association Achievement of Library Excellence Award. Good job. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Gary Holson, proclaim Tuesday, March 7, 2023, to be Hasslet Public Library Day in the city of Hasslet, Texas, and encourage all residents to visit the library and enjoy the many programs and services offered. That doesn't mean you get the day off. There's going to be more people, more people checking out books on the library day. I don't know if you know, Hasslet's got a population that's continually growing every day, maybe around 2,500, I'm going to estimate. But our library has active cards for approximately 15,000? 12,000? No, I like 15,000. But anyway, 12,000 active cards. So excellent job. Let me put that there. Is the 2022 Achievement of Excellence in Libraries Award presented through the Hasslet Public Library, awarded by the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association. Congratulations. One or two, please?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We're very excited about this, and of course, this couldn't have been done without my predecessor, Ms. Barbara Thompson. She was obviously instrumental in helping us get this award. This is an award the library has won before, and this won't be the last we win it. And we've, I've got a wonderful staff and some great creative people working for us, so we'll be doing this again.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have some special guests tonight. We have, I'm honored to have a new superintendent of Northwest Independent School District, Dr. Faust, and we have Tim McClure, Assistant Superintendent of Facilities. I was about to promote you. Very good. Dr. Faust.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to be here to introduce myself. I would like to say what a great honor for the Municipal Library Award. We really appreciate the partnership with your library because that benefits our students in Northwest ISD and our teachers, and helps us further our mission on improving literacy. We have a huge focus on literacy in our school district, so congratulations to you for having that great library organization. It helps our community, and in this case, our learning community. I just wanted to take a minute to introduce myself. As I said, I'm Dr. Mark Faust, I'm new superintendent here in Northwest ISD. I'm working on my second month in the district. I started a little bit into January, and I've learned a lot about weather in North Texas in a really short period of time. We had ice maged and then we had power poles knocked out on the west side of the district and had three of our campuses not be able to come to school because we didn't have power on Friday. And that's just in the first, you know, 45 days that I've been in town. But I've also learned that this is an incredible collection of communities and amazing people in this area. I'll just share with you my background. I grew up in the Houston area, outside of Houston, in a town called Sugar Land. I'm in my 28th year in public education. The first 20-plus years I spent in Fort Bend ISD, which is in Fort Bend County, that's where I grew up. I went off to A&amp;M after high school, growing up in that district, went back and worked for my home district for 20-plus years. I became the superintendent of Kerrville ISD. I was there for six years. If anybody knows where Kerrville is, it's in the Hill Country, just about an hour outside of San Antonio, a little north, a little west, and been very blessed to come to, this is the first time I've lived, I like to say, north of College Station in Texas, but I've been very blessed to come to Northwest ISD and reside here and serve the students and the families of this school district. This is a special place. This is the last school district, God willing, and the creek don't rise, that I'll ever work for, and if I get a good run here, I'll serve for 10 years and then figure out what I'm going to do in my 60s. So feel very blessed to be here and serve your families and the families of all of our communities that we serve in Northwest ISD. Immediately when I got here, I heard the phrase of bond program that the facilities planning committee had been working on for several months, and I was pretty fired up when in Kerrville, we were passing an $88.9 million bond. That was historic for the town of Kerrville, and when I got here and I heard that the committee was working on a $1.995 billion bond program, I was pretty surprised, sticker shock to say, was fair. But when I've looked at the growth, and you'll see some statistics here in a few minutes, I'm going to ask Mr. McClure to share with you. Tim will share with you, the growth since 2003 to today is pretty astronomical, and one of the things that I've learned immediately is that that future growth is every bit as accelerated as it has been over the last 20 years. So when you hear that $1.995 billion price tag, please know that that dollar amount is to build campuses, replace roofs and HVACs, and a wide swath of projects to meet the growing needs of an additional 8,400 students. We don't know how soon we'll be here. Hopefully, the 8,400 students won't be here in the next three to four years. We'd be grateful if it was more like five, six, or seven, but they're coming. That growth is coming to our school district that encompasses 234 square miles, and so I'll ask at this time, Mr. McClure, our Assistant Superintendent of Facilities, to share a brief PowerPoint with you with information on our bond program for 2023.
Thank you, Dr. Faust, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for having us tonight. As Dr. Faust mentioned, I'm going to run through the slides. You've had them in your packet, so hopefully you're familiar with them. I will try not to elaborate too much on all of them and be respectful of your time, but please feel free to stop me if you have any questions along the way, if I glaze over something a little too fast. So, of course, we call a bond election. I think the next slide shows that on February 13, Dr. Faust posted $1.995 billion. You can say 1,995 million if that makes you set feel better, if you want to use the million word, but it is, it is a lot, but the committee actually worked through this for several months since September through January, and actually brought that down from about $3.4 billion worth of assessed needs to bring it down to that amount. So I want to commend their work on that. As we move forward in the, in the presentation, you'll see why do, why do we call bond election? We talked about that. That's the growth. The next slide shows that growth that Dr. Faust was just mentioning. If you look in kind of five-year increments, what we've seen happen in this district, and of course, Mayor Holson just said, it changes by the day here. Of course, it changes by the day for the school district as well. Roughly 5,000 to 6,000 students about every five years, so take that 20-year average, 1,100 students about every year is what we've seen in this district. The past three or four years since, you know, a little bit before COVID and post-COVID, it's kind of been a roller coaster ride. We, COVID, we were one of the few state, districts in the state that actually still grew about 500 students. Most, as you can imagine, most went flat. People stayed home, people held their kids at home. We still grew 500 students in COVID, and then we rebounded with 2,500, and then backed down a little bit this year, just under 2,000. So we're a little all over the board right now, trying to see where we're going to finish out with that average. So growth is, is the key piece. That next slide will show you just what we're doing in the DFW area. We are the fastest growing school district in the area. We closed, you know, more than 3,000, I'm sorry, a little over 3,500 closings last year in homes in this area. You can see the map there, all those yellow and green bright spots on the map are housing developments that we're tracking, whether they're being turned dirt or they're actually selling homes. We're took roughly about a little over 100 that we track throughout the district, you see on that map. As we move on to the next slide, you'll see the annual home ranking report for DFW and all the surrounding areas. We are number one in that area. There's the top 10 on the list, and you can see everything from Rockwall to Royce City, Princeton, Casper, Denton, of course, Northwest at the top. That's based on annual closings, over 3,500, but if you look across that, all those categories, those five categories, we are either at or near the top of every one of those lists. VDL is vacant developed lots, that means the lot is ready to receive a home, it's got a street, utilities, everything there, it just hasn't been put into inventory yet, they haven't started a home. And in those 38,000 futures, I do like to mention, those aren't just a guess, that's actual plats that have been turned into all the different municipalities and counties around us that are actual numbers of lots being, being planned for the future through the different developments that are out there. Next slide, how will this affect the tax rate? So on this particular bond election, we're looking at a one-tenth of a penny increase to the tax rate. Of course, that will happen on the INS side, so the school district, as you may be aware, has two buckets of money that make up its tax rate. The general operating fund, maintenance operation, that goes to pay for all our everyday expenses like utilities and staff salaries, that type of stuff. The INS side is where we pay our debt from. So a tenth of a penny, currently we're at 42 cents, proposed would be 42.1, so there's that tenth of a penny per, per hundred dollars valuation. As you can see on the next slide, that'll be our current, our lowest tax rate since 1993, so in 30 years, this will be our lowest tax rate that we've seen across the board. There's just a swap of the last, you know, seven years that you can see, kind of how those things have started moving down. In 18, House Bill 3 came in and the state took over the M&amp;O portion of the tax rate, so we've been compressed. So when you see that M&amp;O piece start moving down from 104 to 97, to 91, to 87, to 85, the state sets that portion of our tax rate. And so they're, they're ones compressing that, and we are only in control of that INS piece that goes to pay off our debt. On the next slide, you'll see just an example of what we're talking about here. When a home value goes up, sometimes we hear from our constituents that, well, you said the tax rate was going to be low, but I'm still paying more in taxes. Well, that's a product of the county appraisal district and the assessed values, right? So, and you see an example here in 2017, a $315,000 valuation of a home was producing a tax rate, I'm going to step around, 4,575 behind the mayor's head there. You're good, Mayor, I'm just messing with you. But you can see as, as, as that rate goes along, the valuation goes up, even though our rate goes down, you're still paying more several years later, and that scenario is just considering a 5% property value growth. I know that's, probably doesn't seem realistic for most people. It wasn't for my property. My property's been closer to 10 every year, 10%. So just want to point out that, again, of the M&amp;O rate, the Texas Agency, Education Agency sets that portion, County Appraisal District sets the valuation, and we're responsible for the INS rate. So again, very small amount going towards that 1.995. Moving on, I did want to also mention that on our bond website, you'll hear us reference it multiple times tonight, but nisdtxbond.org, there is a calculator for you to be able to calculate what that impact is to your property. So in this example, $450,000 home property, that, believe it or not, is the average across our district. So 450,000, if you back the 40,000 out for your homestead exemption, that puts you at 410,000 at 10 cents, or I'm sorry, not 10 cents, a tenth of a penny valuation, you'd be looking at $4.10 annually increase to that, to your tax bill from that portion. Now, your valuation goes up, obviously that changes, but you can drag that bar along that line and see what that annual increase is to your tax bill based on if this were a successful bond election. Moving on to the next slide, we're going to talk about what projects are proposed. The state requires us to put this into different bond packages, so we have three different propositions. I'll go into each one, but Prop A is that general prop that deals with the facilities and capital improvements. Prop B is designated for anything that's assigned work to a stadium complex that seats over 1,000 seats, and then Prop C is dedicated for technology devices. So if we look at what's in Prop A on the next slide, you'll see the biggest portion of that is 12 new schools. So we have high school number four that would be coming online, middle school number eight that's coming online, four brand-new elementaries, a replacement elementary for Justin, replacement for Prairie View. Of course, in the last bond package, many of you know, we replaced Hasslet Elementary, so similar, trying to roll off some of those older campuses and get them in a new facility. And I think one of the things we're most excited about is the four early childhood centers. The district has wanted to do early childhood centers here for a long time, couldn't really grasp how do we handle our big geography with one center, and our committee said, well, why don't you do four and put them across the district, you know, northeast, southwest, and be able to serve the community across all portions of the district. So the early childhood centers are on there as well. Moving down to the next slide, that first piece of growth talks about everything I just kind of mentioned there. There's a couple other things on there, land acquisition, that's always been a part of our bonds, as we got to continue to buy land for those new schools. The new buses, as we grow, we buy more buses, and then you can see some of the capital improvements there around Central Campus, around some of our other facilities like Steel Early College High School, our Legacy Learning Center, and then some infrastructure replacements across different campuses. The next slide should show you the equity and evolving needs, so increasing our high school cafeterias and competition gyms and our auditoriums to become 6A. We're in the process of the final piece of bringing our high schools up to 6A, and that's Northwest High School. They've got about another year and a half left of renovation to bring that up to 6A. We did that at Eaton and Byron Nelson, and those were focused on the classrooms. This piece is to come back and kind of focus on some of those core spaces, like the auditorium, the cafeteria, and the gym. You'll see some other upgrades to facilities there under evolving needs. Of course, safety and security is always a measure, or has been for probably about the last five bond elections for us. I'm happy to say, when the state mandates came out this summer, or last summer, and talked about everything that was required of school districts, we were well ahead of that curve. I think there was about three things we had to do to check off that list. We've really put a lot of pride on safety and security, and that comes through our bond process, so we're happy about that. I know one thing that you're going to see on there that I know, Chief, see back there? There he is. BDA's, bi-directional antennas, radio system, that's, that allows our first responders to have good radio communication when they're in our buildings, no matter what the business. Of course, we don't want for a bad event to happen, but if it does, we want them to be able to communicate properly. So you'll see the BDA's on there. That's a code requirement now, but we feel that that's an important enough piece that we said, let's just get it up to date in all our campuses. We want our first responders to be able to have that good communication when they're in there. So there's no grandfawning that says we have to go back, but we chose to do that to make sure that we had that equitable nature across all buildings. And then technology infrastructure, really that deals with anything that's the backbone of the system, whether it's cybersecurity or communications or network. That device piece, I'll talk about in just a second, that has to be on a separate bond, but this is the infrastructure piece that's allowed to go into that Prop A. So all that makes up that 1.672 and some change. If we go to the next slide, you'll see Proposition B, so this is the home stadium piece. This is one that our committee took a lot of time with to really reach out to community. We actually did some community surveys to come back and say, what do we do when we introduce a fourth high school to this district with one stadium? We feel that, we heard from our parents, from our community members, that there's already a strain with three high schools sharing one stadium, so we said, well, we got to do something. Do we build a second one and then two share on each, or do we go to a model where we start to put a home stadium at each campus? And ultimately, the committee recommended to the board that they felt the home stadium was the right solution. A lot of that deals with just travel for students, making sure students stay in their class longer, if they're having to come out on a Thursday afternoon to go to a stadium and then not getting home till midnight, then we're seeing a lot of low attendance the next morning on a Friday. So if you're doing all that on Friday night, they can sleep in on Saturday if it's at their campus, they don't have to leave early to get to that home field. So there's a lot that went into those discussions. We also have some renovations at Texan Field, our oldest complex in the district, bringing up some bleachers and restrooms, resurfacing the track and turf, improving the LED lights, and then as well with the NISD stadium, replacing the LED lights, and then some roofing and flooring repairs, fire alarm, HVAC systems at the stadium there. The next one kind of touches on those points I was just making on keeping students in the classroom longer, creating that community atmosphere. Believe it or not, we have some of our home games, whether it's Eaton or Byron, that if they're traveling to an away game, it's actually closer than when they travel to their home game back to Central Campus. So puts it in a little bit of comparison there. And then obviously eliminating that schedule challenge that happens if you have four high schools, and are they playing on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or is there a Wednesday game in there, or two games on Saturday? So just really trying to bring that back to each of the communities. The next one kind of shows a little bit of those items I mentioned for Texan Field, we've already covered, and then the next one shows some of those items for NISD stadium that we already covered. The last piece there, again, I mentioned Proposition C, technology devices. These are our student and teacher devices that are in their hands. The statute says that needs to be a separate proposition. One thing I like to point out here, and we point that out with that asterisk, most of our bonds are sold at about 25-year increments to pay off buildings, just like you would a mortgage. I'm happy to say that if you go back and look at our history, the oldest debt we have out there is only about 15 years old. So even though we've been selling bonds for years, for 25 years, we're being, we're really good at paying them off, and we're only carrying about 15 years of debt right now. However, Prop C, those technology prop bonds, we only sell for three years. We don't, we don't try to span, that didn't make any sense to span and pay off a computer over 20, 25 years. So those are three-year issuances of bonds, and then those get paid off in that timeline. The next slide is, talks about what is the plan for the schools in your area, so I just want to highlight each of those real quick. Of course, Hasslet Elementary, brand-new school, so not a lot there other than the BDA, again, giving that two-way radio connection for our first responders, and then any new students and teachers coming into that campus, obviously, those, those devices would help support that. The next campus is Wilson Middle School. Of course, we don't have Wellington on here, that will be opening up here in the fall, so we're excited about that. So obviously, that's a brand-new school. It does have the BDA system being put into it, but Wilson will also get that, as well as you'll see some of the life cycle replacements that need to happen there, and that refreshment for student devices and teacher devices. The next one is Eaton High School, which is where we're currently zoned to go to Eaton. Again, the BDA, some of those life cycle replacements, the device refresh for students and teachers, pretty new building there, so not a lot. The security shades, I want to point out, that's a, that's kind of a new one for us, starting with Eaton and then what we see at Hasslet Elementary, we've started to put some glazing from the classroom into the hallway, so you can see what's going on as the teaching day happens, and you see what we call learning on display. So the security shades are something we implemented at Hasslet and all our other new prototypes, whereas if there's a lockdown procedure or drill, they can pull that shade down, and it creates a visual barrier between the hallway and what's going on in the classroom. Some of our older campuses like Eaton that had that glazing between hallway and classroom didn't have that, so those shades are being added back to come down and provide that visual barrier, if indeed there's an event that they need to secure in place. Also at Eaton, on the next slide, you'll see that there is, those enlargement of those other spaces to bring them up to 6A, the cafeteria, auditorium, athletics, and some career and technology spaces that need to be brought up. And then of course, Prop B, which is that home stadium piece that's on there as well. Rounding out the slides here at the end, ballot and voting. I just wanted to show you a little bit of the ballot language, or the actual ballot language that we see on the, on the different props, so those are three different propositions, so you won't see the 1.995 anywhere on the ballot, it'll be broken up in these three different props. We've highlighted in red basically what changes from prop to prop. You can obviously read those, I won't read those for you, but just wanted you to see the actual language that, that's on there. And then in addition to our bond election, the next slide you'll see, we also have a trustee election going on, so Place 5, 6, and 7 are all up for reelection. Of course, our incumbents are all running, but they are all opposed as well, so our current board members that are in those positions are Steve Sprouls, Lilian Roush, and Jennifer Murphy, and so just wanted you to see who was up for election on those ballots as well. And this is the order, we've already drawn for order, so this is the order, you will see those names on the ballot when you get to the polls. Last piece there is just reminding, probably dates that all of you know, but anybody watching or looking at this later, just reminding that if you're not registered to vote, or you just moved to the area, make sure you do that by April 6. Early voting begins the 24th through May 2nd, of course, Election Day on May 6, and then we show where that voting can happen, if it's early voting or Election Day. Again, here in Tarrant County, I live near here, I don't live in Hasslet, but just a little bit west of here, and so I use the LLC, probably most people use the LLC in this area, I would assume, easy, easy place to go vote. And then the last piece is just, I'll remind you one more time to, if you have any questions, visit nisdtxbond.org. We have an area for frequently asked questions, submitted questions. You can actually view school locations of where schools are going to be located. You can do that tax impact calculator, and there's a lot more resources there that shows you all the different things that are in the bonds and how they're affecting the different campuses. So that's it. Hopefully, that was pretty brief, I didn't spend too much time for you. I will say one last thing before I exit the podium, and I'll happily answer any questions that you have, but I just want to thank you last time for the support of calling the vote for that property, and we'll see what the citizens of Hasslet say. Certainly, that's a, that's a critical piece for us. If that doesn't happen, that's fine, we'll move on and find another piece of land, but we know Hasslet's going to continue to grow, and we got to find another elementary school here to serve, to serve this community as you continue to add, add people to your community.
Mr. McClure, thank you very much.
Mr. McClure, thank you very much. Dr. Faust, thank you, sir. Welcome to NISD, and welcome to Hasslet, Texas. I did want to say, you know, to just look at the demands that growth puts on us, and to look at 1.995 billion dollars. The good news is, council, we're in that growth stage, but we only need 0.995 billion dollars, okay? Just remember that. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you so much, and again, welcome, Dr. Faust. Thank you, Mr. McClure.
And Mr. McClure, I've got a question, if you don't mind, real quick. Gotta make this, what's the target of the early childhood center? What's your target for those?
Yeah, so that's pre-K, so you're looking at, I believe, it's four, three and four? Or just fours? Just fours. Yeah, primarily four-year-olds, and so the state's required that, so we're in the process of doing that at campus levels, but our needs outgrow our campus level's ability to house those, so.
Right, and are those open to teachers and people of the school district to use?
Yes, so those would be, there'll be some that'll be a qualified basis, and some that's a tuition basis, depending on availability. And then we've even looked at an opportunity to do some staff daycare. We haven't programmed those buildings yet. We know the need is there from the pre-K standpoint and what's being mandated to us. And so, once this thing, if we're successful in this election, then we go straight into designing and programming those.
That's what I think is a big benefit for teachers, if they have some sort of daycare options close to their, you know, environment, whether it's school or admin building or whatnot. But I'm speaking from experience, my wife was now a retired teacher, so that's obviously something, I'd strongly suggest, you know, Northwest, you know, keep that in plan somewhere, and you know, try to make some accommodations for the teachers along that. I mean, that's, you're gonna need teachers, you need benefits to attract the teachers.
We absolutely understand, we've heard that loud and clear, and I think that that's something that we want to be able to offer as a benefit, because you're right, the teacher resources are becoming scarce.
Yes, they are. And one last question, the Steel Academy, long-range plans, keep that open?
Yes, sir. So if you might have seen it on there, some renovations at Steel Accelerated College. So right now, it currently houses the Cosmetology coursework. We're moving that Cosmetology back to Northwest High School, and so part of that is because of the growth that we're seeing of kids wanting to get to that early college high school. And so bringing up some space there to then renovate that back from Cosmetology space back to classroom space, be able to serve that student base.
Okay, good, thank you.
Absolutely.
That brings a question to my mind, in the early childhood facilities, you said the state mandated, do they mandate that districts provide the facilities, or they mandate the attendance?
They mandate the attendance. You have to do pre-K, you're now required to do pre-K, and then, and so we've started doing that at our campuses. We're actually being very effective, but the need that we have in this area far outweighs the space that we have at our campuses. And so that's where this comes into play.
Understood. Well, thank you. Very good information, great overview, and thank you so much.
I got one quick question.
Yes, sir.
With all the new growth and all the new schools, how many new teachers do you anticipate that will be needed, and with those positions, do you have enough applicants to fill them all?
That's a great question. Dr. Faust, I'm gonna let you take the mic on that one.
Yeah, I can tell you immediately, the growth budget that the board approved for this next cycle, and we're opening three brand-new campuses, two replacement campuses, but a middle school and two elementaries, 120 additional staff positions, just for next cycle. That's one year, represents about $8 million of salaries and benefits that the boards approve for our next cycle. But right now, we've got to go find 120 additional teachers. It's a heavy lift, but as we grow over time, we won't typically be opening three brand-new campuses, you know, a middle school and two elementaries. It's not ideal. If we can spread those out, where it's an elementary year, it's much more, see what will pay. That makes any sense?
Yeah, just, so of those 120-something you said, how many do you have filled now, or do you not know, because they haven't been posted yet?
We've just started, and actually, I think the majority of them are posted, all those additional positions are posted. First thing you do when you open new campuses is you move, as you move students, some of the teachers go with the students, so as we're redistributing kids to those new campuses, you move some of the staff, the internal staff. That's been completed, that was kind of from January to now, that's been completed. Those additional positions have been posted. We had a career fair scheduled for last Thursday. Anybody remember what happened last Thursday night? So we had to hustle and cancel that Thursday, we rescheduled that to March 23rd. Some of those, believe it or not, we had applicants from out of state, had flown in to attend that career fair, but we were able to work with them and do some Zoom interviews and go ahead and get them rescheduled, but that'll be really important for us. Also, I can't remember the total number of universities, but I think it's something along the lines of 30-plus university job fairs that we're going to attend as a district and go recruit staff and try and get them to join our team. Yes, sir.
I guess, real quick, on the sports package, Proposition B, there's a lot of information about all the stadiums, new stadiums. Are there any plans in there to either renovate or expand the girls' softball program?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, sorry, I have to laugh as I glance over to Coach Morrow there. No, it's actually included in Prop. A, it's not in the stadium. We're actually going to increase the seating at all of our softball and baseball fields. We're increasing that to 999 specifically, to be below that 1,000-seat piece. But yes, we are going to expand seating at all those different venues for baseball and softball at all high schools. Yes, absolutely. Anything else? Thank you, council.
Thank you again. Have a good evening. Well, that was some, it's pretty eye-opening to look at that. You're lucky, Mr. Land, that you don't have to work on 1.999 billion-dollar package for Hasslet, aren't you? Nonetheless, let's go to item four, citizen participation and comments. Is anyone in the chambers or online that would like to make comment to the council?
I have not received any requests. Is there?
Is there anybody online?
No one's there.
There is no one in the chambers. So then we'll move on to item number five, items of community interest. 5A, Saturday, May 6 is the general election. City of Hasslet general election will be held Saturday, May 6, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the purpose of electing mayor, Councilmember Place 2 and Councilmember Place 4. Filing period has ended, and the filing have filed for a place on the ballot. Mayor for mayor is Gary Halsey, incumbent, and Patricia Hillborn, Place 2, is Kerry Ricketts, incumbent, and Morgan Heer, Place 4 is Hector Nahira, incumbent, and Ruthie Do. 5B, March 17, 2023, is Carter Blood Care Bus will be located at the Hasslet Public Library, Friday, March 17, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. 5C, Hasslet is high, please spread the word. I'm thinking maybe, do we need to put a finder's fee out there to get some motivation to turn in some applicants? But Hasslet has a very good package, great benefits, competitive salaries, and great people to work with. If you know anybody, please make a reference and send them my way. Item six, update on activities, projects, and event recaps. Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our Hasslet Parkway project, we're doing fill over the last drainage structure on Phase 1, which is Hasslet Parkway to Schoolhouse Road area. So behind the old school area right there, they're finishing the last drainage structure that drains down through Lewis Lane and on down here through downtown, so they're working on that right now. And then we're slowly moving ahead on Phase 2 with the Avondale Hasslet Park, utilities are, finally, of course, pretty much got their stuff back, so now it's AT&amp;T, and everybody starts moving their stuff over onto the new poles and getting those things out of the way. So it's moving forward, just slower than we wish it was. But our L project is on track, ready to be open by the end of this month. It looks really good out there. It's gonna be really nice when they get in there, doing all the final grades, final topsoil, mixes are going in, so it's starting to really look like a road ready to hit traffic soon. Big deal, gonna be really nice. And I know it's not on here, because we didn't think it was gonna be this far, but Stephen's got a couple of pictures to put up on there to show our Mount Hasslet behind the fire station isn't no longer there. You can see clear across through there now, it's all down, so that's, that project's going a lot faster and easier than what we thought. The rains came perfect for them, that happened just right, so they didn't have to go use our water to water the road down, they used nature's own water to help roll and compact that road, so that worked out really good for them. They're moving really fast. And then we weren't expecting with the weather last week that they'd get to it this fast, but there's our foundation, the farms are up for the tennis court. They're moving a lot faster than we thought they were gonna be able to. So lots of exciting stuff happening.
That's great. That's great. Things are moving. If you haven't had a chance to go out there, is, I'm talking about the ball fields behind the fire station. Obviously, you know, spreading that out, I thought it was, you know, the finished product would be kind of a loose kind of gravel, rather, it's not. They've compacted with a roller and all that, they've done a fine job, they're not finished yet.
No, not finished yet.
But they've done a fine job.
They've done a really good job.
But it's, I think, it's hard like an asphalt road. And then in the late spring or early summer, sometime in that timeframe, the county will come out and do that chip seal, and it'll look like a, that'll give it a good wearable surface.
Yes.
Last awhile, and that, you know, Mount Hasslet turned out to be, I guess, beneficial.
Mike and his guys over here, they made good use of that material.
They did a good job. It, you know, well, everybody had a hand in that, and think, you know, good job, very resourceful. I do want to mention about the L, that the L is Hasslet Parkway from I-35 to Intermodal and Intermodal North. And that will all be connected, and that's what's opening up March 31st, just for, you know, another couple weeks. Oh my gosh, I didn't think it'd ever get here. But we, after talking to, I'll say, the investors and the people that actually built, you know, made this project happen, I thought it's fitting to have a ribbon cutting to acknowledge those people. And I'll tell you, that's the L would, Stream Realty Group, Tarrant County, precinct 3, Gary Fickers, and North Central Texas Council of Government, Michael Moore, very specifically are all those investors. And Tech Dot. And what was the most impressive thing to see out of this? It started as an idea, hey, what do you think about this? And the private partnership jumped on board, then we all went to the public investors in Tarrant County, they jumped on board, and Tech Dot jumped on board, and it was a remarkably fast reaction to it and made it happen. They made it happen. So it's, that, from that one aspect, we think of state and municipal work, how slow it moves, yes, it does, but there are instances, when you have a small, when you have a window of opportunity, they will pull together and make it happen. But, you know, I applaud them for that, and that's why we thought it was fitting to have a ribbon cutting. So we'll have that on our website, posting that. We'll bring it up again specifically as an announcement in our agenda for next council meeting. Has our water bill already gone out?
No, meter reading's still coming, it'll go out here shortly, over the end of the month.
Well, I have that in our water bill, and just make an announcement to that, and please join us if you can. We're targeting right now, March 31st, is the 99.9% tentative date.
Yes.
And looking at from 10 to 11 for the actual ribbon cutting and acknowledgement, but come out if you can, you'll get more information about it, okay?
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to thank you for encouraging that to occur, and with the L being completed and working with those other entities to get it done in a timely manner and to benefit the citizens of Hasslet, but thank you very much.
Well, you know, it was my pleasure, and I'll say this, there's a little bit of selfish reason in there. I live here, and we need relief on 156, the result of this, is this feeds the industrial area directly, it is a direct route to the industrial area, so the semi-trucks and those warehouse workers should stay on I-35, Hasslet Parkway, and up Intermodal, which would be a much more expedient route than up 287 to 156 going north. Let's see and hope it happens. Very good. All right, Mr. Any questions for Mr. Rogers?
All right, thank y'all.
Okay, let's go to the consent agenda. 7A is approval of the February 21st, 2023 regular city council meeting minutes.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion is made to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I second that.
There is a second. All in favor? Unanimous motion carries. Public hearings, ordinances, resolutions, and action items. 8A, discuss, consider, enact, and ordinance amending the Hasslet Code of ordinances by amending Chapter 8, Article 4.0 or 4.08, short-term rentals pertaining to short-term rentals, amending Chapter 14, Exhibit A, zoning ordinance of the City of Hasslet, Texas, amending portion of Section 7.3.3, commercial uses to modify the definition of lodging facilities to include short-term rentals, by amending Table 4.1-1, table of allowed uses to prohibit the operation of short-term rentals in certain zoning districts, by amending Table 5.5-1, Off-Street Parking Schedule A, to establish many parking requirements for short-term rentals, and amending Appendix A, the fee schedule, Article 7.000, development fees, to amend the short-term rental registration fee. I'd ask Mr. Page to start this off, and Mr. Flankie was involved in this as well, but Mr. Page is here.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Today before you are amendments to the city's existing short-term rental regulations. This is something that the mayor and I have been discussing for many months, when reviewing the city's current regulations on short-term rentals, and trying to find ways to make improvements on it. And so, just as background, currently, the city has short-term rental regulations, they're contained in Chapter 4 of the city's Code of Ordnances, and essentially, right now, the city requires short-term rental operators to register with the city, pay a fee, and then, but essentially, they're allowed in most residential zoning districts, and the current regulations don't have very much enforcement mechanisms allowed in it. And so, looking at that, we're trying to figure out how, what is the best way to move forward to looking at that, we're trying to figure out how, what is the best way to move forward to kind of, uh, so that the city could kind of rein in some of the, uh, negative aspects of short-term rentals. And so what we've done here is we've modified the regulations in Chapter 4 so that, um, we specifically deal with noise. We specifically deal with large parties and event centers by prohibiting both. Um, we also create several new, um, enforcement mechanisms that allow the mayor uh, to, uh, suspend temporarily and even revoke, uh, the registration, uh, for short-term rental holders. And of course, that is subject to, uh, council, uh, being councilable. Uh, for short-term rental registration holder, we'll get to have an opportunity to have a hearing before the council in case there's any issues with that. You'll also see that we have increased the fee for short-term rental registration holders from $100 to $300. And that is to account for the additional staff time, um, and all of that. And we have a notification now as for all neighbors within 300 feet of where the proposed short-term rental will be. And then kind of the, another large change is that we have, uh, put some of these regulations into our zoning ordinance. And so it is now, short-term rentals is now listed as a commercial lodging facility. Um, and we limit it to only, uh, multifamily residential neighborhoods, mobile home, as well as mixed-use commercials. So they'll no longer be permitted within single-family, um, neighborhoods. In addition, by putting it into, uh, the zoning code, we'll be able to i- issue citations under the zoning amendment, uh, under the zoning code. And so in addition, so if they are having an illegal short-term rental house, uh, and within a single-family house, for example, not only would that violate, uh, the city's current ordinance about registration, but then they would also have a zoning violation by operating, uh, a commercial lodging facility within, uh, a zoning district not allowed. And so that's increased fees. Um, and so this just is kind of a holistic way of looking at it by, uh, giving the city additional enforcement mechanisms and also limiting where, uh, they could be located to again, allow people who live in single-family neighborhoods not to have, um, have these in their, within their neighborhood. So I'm open to any questions or more, if you would like to go ahead.
I got a question. Are there any state laws that address this? I, I know the city, I believe the city of Arlington had a couple of lawsuits against the neighborhood because they were restricting the homeowners from having these things. So is there anything that would possibly contradict?
That's a legal issue, I guess.
Sure. So, um, at every legislative session over the last decade, probably, there have been laws proposed to preempt cities from being able to regulate short-term rentals. Um, I'm not aware of one that's been proposed at this legislative session. Those have never passed. So to answer your question, no, there are not any current state laws. There could be in the next few months, but there are not any at the moment. And so there's always that risk, especially with, they have, uh, the state legislature in the past has preempted cities' ability to regulate, um, Ubers. And so other things kind of in that gig economy that are kind of coming about. And so there is that possibility. Um, and to your question about the lawsuits, there are, um, multiple lawsuits pending against different cities who have different types of regulations. Um, and so those have really reached contradictory opinions. And so we do not have any set, uh, court precedent on what cities can or cannot do at this time. And so with that kind of, with ambiguity, both in the regulation from the state legislature, as well as with the court rulings, most cities have been, continue to move forward with adopting regulations on short-term rentals, pending any sort of ruling, pending any state law that may preempt it at some point in time. We just keep being told several years, oh, a ruling or a state law is gonna come. It just never does. And so this is an, or this is a law that will be put, or this regulation will be put in place, uh, obviously pending any state law that would.
Uh, I have a question, Mr. Page. It's, it's become a popular thing now for people to rent out their pools in the summertime for parties. So would this ordinance cover that restriction? Would it restrict that from happening?
So what we do have is that, um, this is for the registration use of a residence or residential structure or portions thereof as a short-term rental. And so I think arguably the answer would be yes, this would cover that because it would be, uh, obviously a residence, but also if someone were to rent out their uh, apartment over the garage in case they had one of those or any portion thereof. So I think there's an argument to me that we could use this to enforce against that.
We had instances here in Hassett where pools would be rented out, patios. And this is rapid to cover that.
And we also broadly defined, uh, reception or event center to include indoor or outdoor facilities that accommodate groups for parties and entertainment, conventions, weddings and activities like that. So again, it was to try to, uh, as much as possible to include those type of, so that houses uh, that are supposed to be residential in nature aren't being rented out for commercial, um, entertainment purposes.
Counsel, any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the public hearing. All right. Uh, I open the, uh, public hearing on this item at, uh, 7:55 PM. Is there anyone in the chambers or online that would like to speak to this issue? Do we have anybody online? All right, there is no one online and there is no one in the chamber. So I close the public hearing at 7:55 PM. Discuss, consider, enact. Cheers, counsel. Um, any questions, discussions about it? Uh, if not, uh, entertain a motion at any time.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
To approve the ordinance amending the Hassett Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 8, Article 4.08, short-term rentals pertaining to short-term rentals, amending Chapter 14 Exhibit A, the zoning ordinance of the City of Hassett, Texas, amending portion of Section 7.3.3, commercial uses to modify the definition of lodging facilities to include short-term rentals by amending Table 4.1-1, Table of Allowed Uses to Prohibit the Operation of Short-Term Rentals in Certain Zoning Districts by amending Table 5.5-1, Off-Street Parking Schedule A to Establish Minimum Parking Requirements for Short-Term Rentals and by amending Appendix A, Fee Schedule, Article 7.000, Development Fees, to amend the Short-Term Rental Registration Fee.
Motion has been made to approve item, the ordinance as stated in item 8A. Is there a second?
Mayor Holsey, I second.
There is a second. Any further, any discussion?
Mayor Holsey, I just have one question. I, and I may have just missed it. Is this one in front of the Planning and Zoning Committee? What was their recommendation?
Yes, it went before the Planning and Zoning Commission and they recommend, recommended unanimously to approve this.
Any further discussion, any questions? I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. The motion carries. Thank you, counsel. 8B, excuse my voice. Discuss, consider, enact on ordinance amending Hassett Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 14, zoning, Section 5.3.4, to add standards and regulations for residential fencing construction in the Old Town Core and Old Town Expansion zoning districts. Mr. Schlenke and Mr. Thacker, please, sir, here.
Thank you, Council Mayor. Um, essentially this is a ordinance amending Chapter 14 zoning, uh, Section 5.3.4, the Hassett Code of Ordinances. Purpose of this amendment is, is to establish the fencing types and construction standards of residential fencing in Old Town Core and Old Town Expansion zoning districts. A little background, um, a while back, had somebody ask for a permit for a fence in Old Town, went to the zoning ordinance and it was actually silent. There was, there were no recommend, or there were no standards set in place at that time to, uh, to give them, you know, any kind of construction, uh, methods or anything to, to build their fence. Um, we did meet with the, uh, Building Review Committee on February 7th. We did have a lengthy discussion on that. Uh, we did put together a few, um, uh, standards. Uh, you have those in front of you tonight in a, in an ordinance, a draft ordinance. And, um, uh, it did go to Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, last Tuesday, February 28th, and they did uh, recommend unanimous approval, um, to the city council. So I'll entertain any questions if you have anything.
Counsel, do you have any questions for, uh, Mr. Thacker?
Mayor Holsey, I have one question. So the existing, um, fences are fine. They don't have to go back and change them.
Correct. They're grandfathered.
Making sure.
I, I was gonna ask the same thing, but I, I see the chain link fences are not allowed. So this is only for new builds? So if somebody wants to replace the, an existing fence, they can do it with the same materials?
Uh, this is, that may be a, a legal question there. Uh, this is, this does pertain to, uh, repairs and, and new fences. So, um, I think in the past, if they did any kind of repair, it would equal more than 50% of the fence that would constitute a new fence. So that's my understanding.
And that, that is similar to the renovation of a home or re, you know, is, okay, when you hit that 50% mark, you're crossing into new territory.
I guess they could also fix a portion one year and then until they have a whole new fence with the same materials, which I'm okay with. I think they should be grandfathered, but maybe it should be clearer in the ordinance to say that. So there isn't any discrepancy.
So is, uh, noted, noted that's something that we could, you know, Mr. Schlenke or Mr. Page, any thought on that?
Um, my understanding, these would apply, um, for when they need to receive a permit. And so we cannot issue a permit for a fence if they're using prohibited materials. And so if, if I, I, you probably know more than I do about it. So do they need a permit to do a, a minor repair?
No, no.
So that, that would be kind of a distinction. So if they require a permit, then no permit can be issued so long as they have, if they, they can, a permit can only be issued if they're using the approved materials. And that's.
You can do a repair on your fence, but you don't need a permit for that, correct? Is that what you're? That's my question.
No, I have to. I mean, like I said, I've always treated it as if there was 50% more, or at least 50% of the fence is being replaced, then that would constitute a permit.
Okay, we can make that decision here and now. Counsel, let's talk about this.
So that, that was my question as well. Cause I was thinking back to a property that has three fences. That was gonna fence off the fourth with the existing material that could be chain link. It's, it's only a fourth. But it's new. It's, it would be new material.
If it's new material added and there's not a fence there currently, that would be, that would require the permit.
Okay.
So that enters into my mind, okay, 50% repair, okay? How would calculate that 50%? Is that the entire perimeter of the yard? That's fenced? And then anything that's, you know, 50% of that? Or is it 50% of a section?
I'd like to address, uh, several things. First off, we want people to maintain their property. So if they have a portion of a fence that's, you know, falling down, we want them to fix it. We don't want them to be in a, in a bad state. But it would be the whole fence is the 50%. Now, unless they're putting it in a different location, if they're putting the fence in a different location, that's a, would require a permit. Cause there's a lot of things we have to look at, you know, utilities, drainage and everything like that. But if it's, uh, an existing fence, normally 50% of the entire fence. Now, if you're gonna put, close off an area, that's a new location. And so that would require a permit.
That, that still leaves, leaves it open. For example, the, the scenario that Councilmember Moore stated is you have an existing fences, chain link fence. The homeowner wants to fence off another area, also with a chain link fence. You know, he's gonna require a new permit, right?
Correct. If you're adding.
Is he gonna be allowed to use a chain link fence?
No. If you're adding to, if you're adding new fence, you couldn't use the, uh, the materials that are prohibited.
So I'm gonna propose that, uh, anything greater than 50% repair requires a permit. But that 50% is calculated the entire enclosed area that that fence encloses. How does that sound, counsel?
I think the term you're looking for is surface area of the existing fence. So it would be like 50% of the surface area of the existing fence.
Surface area.
Yeah, surface area.
No, that's fine. I mean, it just, it, it needs to be defined. So a resident doesn't get in a conflict about, well, what is the 50%? What is 50%, yes. So we'll, we'll take into account the entire enclosure and it's 50% of that surface area. What do you think, counsel? So anything greater than 50% requires a permit or a new sectioning within requires a permit. Any new fencing requires a permit. Very good. Okay. Uh, we need to have a public hearing on this. Any further, uh, refinement that you might propose before you go into approve?
Mayor Holsey, I do have a question on the height of the fence. 3A, it talks about the front of the, in the front yard, the height could only be three feet.
Right, right.
And then in the backyard, the height could only be four. So is this preventing first having like six foot?
No, it is six foot. Maximum is six foot.
So what you're reading there is the, uh, non-privacy fence? Then there is Section 4 privacy fences native. They're allowed at six feet.
Six feet.
Correct.
So is, is the, but privacy fence is not allowed on the front.
Correct.
Fence. So that's, that's kind of tagging on here. Cause that's my, what I read on this, I, I see a concern with the three foot. Cause most dogs I know, except for my Jack Russell, are gonna clear a three-foot fence without a problem. So I'm just saying, I mean, is, where did three foot come from? Is that a standard in cities or, to me, that's just low.
Uh, it's just the, uh. Isn't the three foot for the frontage of the house, not the back of the house?
Right.
So a lot of people have decorative at the front of their house. And so, so they don't put an eight-foot fence in front or six-foot in front. It's just the decorative part in front of the house.
Well, sure, but that dog doesn't care if it's front or back. It's not meant to retain a dog or any animal at all.
But the dog is only, I think, decorative, correct?
That's, I mean, that, that's my only concern with this. I mean, the three-foot height is not tall enough. Well, I don't think that we want to encourage people fencing off their front yards either. No, well, all right, so maybe I misinterpreted. So is this, this fence in front of the front, that front of the house? Cause I didn't think you could put a fence past the front part of your building. I'll get, let me, and, and you, you answer this, but I was gonna give you, if you look out here in Old Town and this, this fencing ordinance was also taking into consideration the architectural standard that the council recently set here in, you know. And again, this is very specific to Old Town. Sure. And so it set a standard and style that what you see out there, other than chain link fence, but you see these three, uh, three-rail low front yard fences out there. And then you'll see a higher, you know, six-foot fence in the back, privacy fence. So it's merely, you know, okay, what do they got out there now that, uh, what we were trying to avoid, what we did avoid, okay, someone wants to put up six foot. Okay. And then someone else maybe wanna put up an eight foot or a ten foot. Okay, wait, that's not gonna look good at all. Uh, you know, some, some kind of standard. You can go lower. You don't have to put in six in the backyard. You can put in four in the backyard. We're not saying it has to be six, but. But anyway, that front was, is really kind of decorative. Please go on, Moore, you can do a better job than I can.
Yep. Yes, the, the front yard is just decorative. It's not the man that kept, keep any animals in. In fact, there's two types. So there's the rail fence, and then there's a, like a wrought iron fence, which neither one are gonna keep animals in. In fact, we don't want anything like hog wire or anything in the front. And the reason why you have it so low, and it's, it's a common use, is you have a lot of visibility at corners, you don't want to, to hamper. And so it's just a decorative. Now, when you get to the back, when you go to the six foot, you know, behind the building setback, then that is a screening device.
Okay, that may be my, it may be my misinterpretation of reading this, just reading, you know, the front, you know, I was reading front fence, that's just the front.
Front yard, yeah.
The front piece of the fence, not, and that's the front yard, but you know, there's, oh, first part fence you get, that'd be the front.
You can have your entire yard from the front wall of your house back to the backyard, completely fenced off with your privacy fence. So, but it's just the front yard is where we're talking about the three foot.
And just one other quick comment, fences are not required at all, but if you're gonna have them, we wanted to have them consistent within the.
No, sure, I get, yeah, the front yard bit, I'm getting that now. I was just thinking, I might, I was thinking that front piece as you see, not, not the part out by the front sidewalk.
At the return from property line to your house, that, that could be the six foot privacy fence.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Okay, and I just want to be clear, the four foot, now where would that four foot fence be?
Well, if you wanted to do wrought iron all the way around, you could do, if it was limited to four feet in the rear.
Any other questions, please?
If I may, just to follow up a little bit on the backyard on the six foot fence. I know a lot of the newer communities are going six foot or eight foot, but they have to be, supposed to be tiered, so that they'd look professional going between the two if they're, if they're gonna do it. But we've just decided.
There'd be a taper effect that would go from six foot to the four foot or whatever.
To the four foot would have to be a tapered effect. But we're, the highest still is we're allowed, even though the newer communities were allowing up an eight foot privacy fence, in Old Town, you're wanting to maintain just a six foot.
Correct.
There's, there's several other things in here. It's, it's gonna be a board on, on the privacy fence, it's gonna be a board on board fence with a cap, a cedar cap on it. Also, if there are poles that are exposed, steel poles, which are required, they have to be encased. You just can't have, uh, post, steel posts as the visibility from the, from the streets or something like that. So that's a couple little additions that are in here, so it'd make it a lot better look.
All right, we're set to go to the public hearing? All right. I open the public hearing on this matter, which is 8B regarding the fencing at 8:12 PM. Is there anyone in the chambers online that would like to speak to this topic? Do we have anybody online? There is no one online. Do we have any, anybody in the chambers that would like to speak to this topic? There is no one in the chambers. Therefore, I close the public hearing. It's 8:13 PM. All right. Discuss, consider, and act, Counsel, it's yours. Please do your discussion, and I'll entertain a motion at any time.
Mayor Halsey, I'd like to make a motion, but do I need to include the 50% surface area amended?
Yes, you do, please.
Okay, not quite sure how you want me to word that. Mr. Page?
So the ordinance as written under 5.3.4A2 says that the standards for this, in this area are applicable to replacement in new residential fences. And so we can make it so that it's applicable, keep that language in there, but to say that the replacement in new fences are, should be defined as those that require, I'm also trying to think of a good way to say it. A 50% surface area would be improvements to 50% surface area. Is that, what do you guys think? Of the entire fence, so.
And you could make your motion to incorporate what the city attorney just stated.
That's fine.
I would like to make a motion to pass the ordinance amending the Hasslet Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 14 zoning, Section 5.3.4, to add standards and regulations for residential fencing construction in the Old Town Core and Old Town Expansion zoning District, and to be amended as the city attorney just stated.
All right, the motion is made to approve the proposed ordinance on, I'll say, fencing with regard to Old Town Core and Old Town zoning districts as described in Item 8B, and also incorporating that language that the city attorney has verbalized in modifying or defining what 50% is. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I'll second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, the motion carries. Thank you, Counsel. Item 8C, discuss, consider, and act on an ordinance amending the Hasslet Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 13, Article 13.14, water and sewer pro rata to amend the city's regulations pertaining to water and sewer connections. Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Counsel. I hope y'all have all had time to read all this. It's not a lot in this section, but this is to try to clarify under our water utility portion of our ordinance, to bring in clarification for how and whom and when you hook up with water or sewer system. That's why we went in and made these minor changes, mostly to deal with sewer. The water portion corresponds well with the rest of our ordinance, but the sewer portion had a couple of places where it allowed things we don't allow. And then also had a spot where it was allowing other people, our EDC boards, to go in and pay for stuff for people that we don't want to begin with. So we wanted to get rid of those sections and clean them up, so that those little places where it did not meet the rest of our ordinance, our other portions in the ordinance had specific things, this one kind of, it wasn't very well clarified in this portion of an ordinance. It's not a big portion of what overall, everything else that goes into when someone wants to come and develop, it's a small little piece, but we wanted to read the same as it does in the rest of the ordinance, so we don't have places where it conflict. If you got any questions specifically about any of these, I mean, do what I can do to answer any of those questions.
One of the things that I know, do you, unless you gotta, I'm just gonna state, this ordinance makes it very clear that if you're in the ETJ, it requires that you, if you want services from the city of Hasslet, sewer services, you must petition to annex into the city of Hasslet. Now, Water CCN, it includes our ETJ. There is no annexation requirement for that. Sewer services are not addressed. And Hasslet, just as the other municipalities throughout the state of Texas, if you want their services, the city sewer services, then you must petition to annex in. And that goes back to a, another component that goes into TRA, because we must assure TRA that there's certain, there's not certain events going into that sewer system. And the only way we can have that oversight is if in their, if they are in the city limits of Hasslet, Texas. That is really the background and fundamental reason why. Other highlight, another highlight or two within this ordinance, that was really the major point of this, is this change. Now, clarification.
It was to clean that up, because our TRA contract specifically spells out how we do it. And this come over here and said, oh, no, well, maybe you could do something else. So it was, it left things kind of, you know, hard for somebody to look at and go, no, 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 it's black and white. Here's how you do. Because this way, it matches our contract with TRA, so everything now is the same.
Mayor Halsey, just one quick question. And again, this is on, I think, Section 1314005, the developer's responsibilities. Again, go straight to what you're talking about is interpretation. It says it's in the middle that we're changing it to if the city determines.
Right.
You know, is, are we wanting to maintain some viability there? Because now, once the city could determine in one case, one way, it could determine another way in another case. That's why I'm just curious, if we're saying in city determines, it is not putting it in the black light.
Most of that determination has to do with sewer lift station and forced mains. Typically, we discourage, we don't really want those in our system, because they are a large and expensive maintenance item. If someone wants one, we prefer it be private, they deal with it. But we want to, there's always the possibility, something may come tomorrow, that that's the only way it will ever work for us. You know, Hugh White, if we ever wanted to try to redo Hugh White some way, that's the only way Hugh White can get up and over the hill and actually flow into our sewer system. There's no other way to get there.
But you, that knows, your question is specific to 1314005, subpar, right, B? Okay, that is specific, if the city determines, is specifically addressing the use of lift stations.
That's what I was asking. If you wanted to still maintain some, you know, some.
Yes, yes, you know. We never know what might could happen.
There are some times, there are no other ways to accomplish a sewer than a lift station.
And that's all, that's all I was asking. It looked like we were trying to do things black and white to make sure things, but we still left one area.
We left that one little caveat, just in case, because we do know, we do have some great areas of town that there is no other way that that might ever happen.
All right. So we've had our presentation in the public hearing, you're in discussion right now. Any further discussion? Please go on with that. If not, I'll entertain a motion at any time.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I move to accept the ordinance amending the Hasslet Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 13, Article 13 dot 14, water and sewer pro rata to amend the city's regulations pertaining to the water and sewer connections.
The motion has been made to, through the ordinance, amending the Hasslet Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 13, as described in Item 8C. Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
There is a second. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Counsel. Item 8D, discuss, consider, and act on an ordinance amending the Hasslet Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 13, Utilities, Article 13.15, right-of-way management to amend the right-of-way construction permit procedures and matters, and to amend Appendix A Fee Schedule, Article 7.000, development fees, and to amend the right-of-way construction permit fee. Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Again, this is also for clarification. Our current right-of-way ordinance only pertaining to franchise utilities that wanted to work within city right-of-way. One of the issues we're finding in some of our newer neighborhoods, we have actual individuals who want to build things out in our right-of-way, and there was no real way for them to do that. There was no permitting process, anything they could really do. So we went back through the ordinance to rework this where that made it, where someone who has a private need to come across our right-of-ways could do so and not have to, you know, worry about those things. Or it was franchise utilities, pretty much, yeah. You had to be a company, had to have a franchise agreement with the city, all sorts of things that the average individual who just needed a drain or something simple would never be able to accomplish. So we wanted to redo the ordinance so we could get all those things and make that available to those people, that if they do need it, there is a way to get there now, and a permit that you can go down the muck and pull and actually be able to do something to help your property out. And then we adjusted our fee schedules to provide a place for that permit and a fee for it.
I would like to add to that, there was, there's been several instances that really, I requested that SNAP study this ordinance, and, and it was particularly, it had to do with new subdivisions, and very specifically, those new subdivisions. And it wasn't particularly, it wasn't particularly homo, the occupants, it was builders that were putting in drainage system that probably, well, I'm gonna put it that way, I'll just leave it there, drainage systems, and terminating that drainage system in our right-of-way. Now, in several cases, it was in a point that caused, potentially has caused damage to our street. We are in the process through lab examinations and coring and things of that, to see what caused this structural damage to our street. And his street, it was heaving. But what was noticed, there is these unpermitted terminations in the city's right-of-way that was there continuously draining water down into that subway. So this ordinance is to, if anybody, anything, builder, developer, utility company, anybody, any entity, if you want to put anything in the city's right-of-way, you will have to pull a permit. So we have the opportunity to look at it and assess it.
I had a question, Mr. Mayor. So I pull, I want to put something in the right-of-way and I pull a permit, and then is it my responsibility to maintain at that point?
That's one of the reasons it has it, is it was leading to these ones that we have out there. 20 years down the road, we need to go in and replace the water line, we're going in there, and now we've got all these other drains that we don't know about, that we're gonna be stuck with fixing, repairing, all kinds of things that we know nothing about. This way, we will have record of them, we will know they're there, we will know what's going on, and know who it is that, oh, this is yours, when we come through, you're gonna have to make sure to maintain and make your system work while we get our work done and out of the way.
What if I sell my property at that point? I would disclose that to the new homeowners, if that was theirs now to maintain?
Yes, it's gonna be like any other part of the permit, it's always there from now on, mine can keep records of all that stuff in it. I was along route with that property.
But yes, that responsibility transfers with sell of property. Any other questions, Counsel?
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the ordinance amending the Hasslet Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 13, Utilities, Article 13 dot 15, right-of-way management to amend the right-of-way construction permit procedures and matters, and to amend Appendix A Fee Schedule, Article 7 dot 000, development fees, to amend the right-of-way construction permit fee.
The motion is made to approve the ordinance as described in Item 8D. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I second that.
There is a second. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Counsel. Motion passed.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Counsel.
Item 8E, discuss, consider, and act on the sanitary sewer capital projects revision. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council. It's good to see everyone once again. What we've got before you this evening is a, is a brief update and presentation on, on. we've got before you this evening is a, is a brief update and presentation on, on the sanitary sewer capital improvement plan that we're in the process of revising on behalf of the city. We began work in earnest, November, December, on the sanitary sewer master plan, which was budgeted in this year's budget. And we've subsequently determined the need for two additional projects to be added to the list that, that you see there, that consisted of three projects developed back in the summer of, I guess, twenty twenty-two. As everyone knows, there's approximately thirteen hundred platted lots in various stages of development within the city of Hasslet. We did not have the opportunity to complete the master plan prior to COs being issued in late twenty twenty-two. So we took what we knew at the time, and we developed the three projects and budgets accordingly for those projects prior to issuing to that debt in twenty twenty-two. If you go to the next exhibit, what I've tried to do is summarize the system, and we'll keep a big picture for just a moment. And we'll start up at the, I guess, the northeast corner of that project in red. That would be our meter station, nine point five HC, for allowing metered flow from the Buffalo Creek Basin of the city into the yellow, orange lines there, which would be TRA. That project, we knew about, we knew the, the funding, we knew the schedule. So we left that project in the, in what you see here on our revised capital plan. And what we've done is we've taken a portion of the cyan, which is the second project listed, we've taken a portion of those project funds from the Buffalo Creek Interceptor replacement, and transferred those to the project in yellow and the project in orange. So let me talk real briefly about the two new projects. You know, the city's in the process of expanding the fire station to the north on FM one fifty-six, and in order to accomplish that expansion, determined that an extension of the sewer system through Maxwell Estates, through the ball fields behind the fire station, would be required to allow for that expansion, open up some opportunities for sewer service to that northeast corner of Blue Mountain Road and one fifty-six, and provide the opportunity for future service to the ball fields located behind the fire station. So we put together a concept plan and a budget for that project, and you'll see that listed on the revised project revision of one point eight million dollars. We're still in the process of fine tuning the design of that line. We need to get surveying going, et cetera. So I wanted to bring this revision to you and basically allow us to move forward with the surveying and design of that line, and allow us to bill and track our time and the expenses associated with it for that project, moving those funds from the previously approved Buffalo Creek Basin line. In addition, you see two small segments of what we're calling the West Side Interceptor, located generally adjacent to Schoolhouse Road and railroad tracks back behind into the north of Bashmore Farms and the Meadow. And what we're proposing there is, based on the, the levels of development on the west side of the system, and the builders' take-down schedule, and the number of existing connections, it was determined that replacement of those segments of, of the West Side Interceptor were a higher priority than the Buffalo Creek Basin line. So obviously, there's about twelve hundred and fifty gallons per minute that are currently flowing into that line in the area of one fifty-six and Schoolhouse Road, Westport Parkway. And so what we've determined is, instead of replacing the whole line through there, we can take a segmented approach and upsize small portions of the system that are basically pinch points or choke points for that portion of, of the city's system. We've also proposed to reallocate some funds from that big line in green, that would be the Henrietta, Henrietta Creek fifteen-inch line. That's the TRA Fort Worth Hasslet Freeway Line. Originally, we go back to the twenty twenty-one master plan that was done and approved, that was calling for a thirty-six inch line to go back in through there. We've subsequently worked over the last six and a half, eight months with Fort Worth and TRA, and the developer of the Lape Prell property in Fort Worth, to determine that a twenty-four inch line could be installed based on a new alignment that allowed for steeper grades, and reduce that diameter from a thirty-six down to a twenty-four. We've also had enough time to calculate assets pro rata share of that facility, and it determined that by keeping our existing fifteen-inch line in place, which wasn't possible under the old plan, just because it was, the old plan was showing a straight replacement of the line, we can essentially buy in about thirteen hundred gallons a minute of capacity instead of three thousand gallons a minute, thereby reducing your costs from an estimated one point eight million dollars down to eight hundred thousand dollars. So we've got meetings scheduled, we've got a meeting on Friday, actually, to try to get the final deal points of the reimbursement agreement and the freeway agreement, the ILA with Fort Worth in place. You'll be seeing those on an upcoming council agenda to try to move that project forward. But we know a lot more now than we did back in late summer, early fall, when these projects were put together. And in order to accurately track project costs associated with these improvements, we're requesting that we be allowed to essentially add two new projects and reallocate funding from the, from the ones we had previously developed. I'd like to point out that the bottom line dollar amount's still the same, six point four, still six point four. In a sense, we've been able to take some time, evaluate the system, figure out what we've got, what we can, what we can use, what we absolutely have to have, the scheduling of the developments that are in place and under construction, and essentially add two new projects to the list. So it's taken us some time to get here. We're still not quite wrapped up with the master plan, but we know enough about where we're at, feel good with the numbers and the project budgets that are put together. The one point eight million on the meter station, that's a, that's a high-end number. That would be if the project were to go to bid as a standalone project, and we're hoping we can get that designed and put in with the TRA interceptor project later this summer. The time will tell on that, but we don't want to count our eggs before they're hatched. But the other projects, we were able to make some revisions to the, the project budget, count for these new, new facilities. So, again, just kind of an update, we'll be working through the, the master plan finalization as part of the impact fee update that will be presented to the E and Z C I C and you all beginning this summer, and then it'll be a eight, ten-month process of working with Roman to get your impact fees updated. But again, we started with the city's update to the comprehensive plan. That was critical, right? The, the former water master plan, sewer master plan, said there's fifteen thousand folks gonna be living here ultimately, you know, with the revisions to the comp plan that's gone down significantly, which allows for smaller facilities to go into the ground. Our understanding of the system and the facilities that were put in during the original comprehensive plan and installation of these facilities less than twenty years ago, has allowed us to take advantage of some of those facilities as well, and lower the, lower the hit to the pocketbook, if you will. So, city's in good shape. We've got a, a nice, healthy reserve of impact fees that can go towards projects that continue to develop as we go through the master plan. But big-ticket, high-priority projects are what you see before you, and so we're recommending that we be allowed to move forward with this project revision and, and keep everything moving. Any questions for myself?
Mayor Holsy, I have one question.
Please, go ahead.
And again, maybe I just wanted to make sure I heard it correctly, but I, I know I, the last part of it, you're change, we're changing budget for these new projects, but I thought I heard on the Buffalo Creek that we're actually taking, diverting some money from Buffalo Creek to these projects, or is, or so in the future, we're gonna have to look at additional dollars to Buffalo Creek?
Well, Buffalo Creek, what we're doing, we had a three million dollar budget originally. That was developed as part of the CO. That budget's gonna go down to one point two million. We know that will cover that small segment through Harmon Road, which is, appears at this point to be the choke point. If there's additional segments of the ten-inch upstream from that, what, what we'll do is, we'll take the, the impact fees from those proposed developments upstream and apply those to the project in the future. In other words, you know, Sweetgrass comes in with five hundred and fifty lots, or whatever it is, those, those collected impact fees would be used to help fund that project if needed in the future.
And, and that's the projects down below in the orange you're talking about, correct? But I'm just, I was just curious, Buffalo Creek, you said that you wanted, that we're gonna be diverting some things, the things that, for future. I'm, I'm asking if, are we gonna be looking at a future budget to actually add more dollars back to the Buffalo Creek? In a future budget?
Potentially.
Okay.
Potentially, but the, the city's, I think there's three point two million dollars in impact fees currently that have yet to be allocated for project. And we have not gone through, and, I mean, we know there's almost six hundred impact fees upstream of there that would come in as well. And that line's not programmed to be over capacity until Sweetgrass is essentially a build-out. Same with the vines and watercress. So there's a ways to go. From the west side perspective, there's just, we don't have that much time. So, so if, if there does need to be some funding, we'll come back. But, but the plan at this moment is to collect impact fees to pay for that line, not issue debt.
Okay, okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions? Very good. There's no further discussion. I would entertain a motion.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
We have a speaker that's requesting to speak on this item.
Very good. And who is the speaker?
Christine Holsy.
Mrs. Holsy, would you please come to the podium, turn on your microphone, and...
Thank you very much, Mayor, counsel. I just wanted to, I was looking this over, yes, sir?
Please identify yourself and your address.
Chris Holsy, two zero zero three, FM one fifty-six, Hasslet. I was looking at this, what was provided in the packet, and I just wanted to applaud the mayor and the city engineer on the professional job that was done in identifying the future needs of the city for the sewer needs. This project is detailed and amazing. To have all of these projects identified and the debt already issued to cover them is a testament to good planning on the part of the city. So I thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge what this represents. Thank you very much.
I, I, I thank you for the compliment, but I will say this. All the credit goes to Beltrop and Associates. It comes with quality engineering, and I will say this, I spent my career as an engineer, working on high-end type engineering, which includes nuclear facility. And it's a rare occasion that you find the quality of engineering that you will find in Beltrop and Associates. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. And I'd be pronounced if I didn't say that I've got a real good team at the office. I may be the one that shows up, or George or Roman, but we've got a, got a dedicated staff that, that work really hard for y'all, and we appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, sir.
All right, then. Counsel?
Mayor Holsy?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the sanitary sewer capital projects revision as presented.
Motion is made to approve the sanitary sewer capital projects revision as amended, or as presented, rather. Is there a second?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second that.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Motion passes. Item eight F, discuss, consider, and act on a master lease purchase agreement with NCL Government Capital for the backdoor twenty-one thousand, or twenty-one hundred L sewer cleaner vacuum truck. Man, I thought that was something to do with Star Wars or something. Excuse me. But, Ms. Lamb, please.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Thankfully, I'm not coming to you tonight with a billion-dollar price tag on this item. My, my career high so far has been fifty-six million, and I'm really happy to just have that record stand. And we are asking you to look at a lease for the vacuum truck that you approved as a potential lease back during preparations for this fiscal year budget. And the Public Works Department has worked with the vendor, Kenlock, and they have pretty much stayed right within what they were looking at at budget time with a, a purchase price outright of this truck of five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. And we're asking you to consider a ten-year lease, and the interest rate, five point three five percent, would mature on June fifteenth of twenty thirty-two. We budgeted sixty-eight thousand, sixty-eight thousand, seventy-seven dollars for the annual payment in this year's budget, and the payment comes in at sixty-seven one hundred and thirty-seven thou, sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and six cents. Those payments would be due on June fifteenth every year. A couple of things to note, the leasing company, NCL Government Capital, is a well-renowned fixture in the government lease market. And when you have vendors of large equipment, such as the Sewer VAC Truck, most normally your customer base is a government of some type. And government leases, as our attorney can tell you, are a little bit different than what you might see, you know, as something that you've seen in private business or even for yourself. One of the things that does affect the pricing and the interest rate on this item is, in a government lease, you normally have what's called a non-appropriation clause, which this lease does have. Basically, what that means is, for some reason, say our build-out that we're expecting, for instance, does not happen, and we end up in two or three years' time, we don't think we can afford to lease this truck anymore. If you all decided not to budget funds for the annual payment, and there's a clause in here that would allow you to cancel that lease in that manner. That kind of makes your interest rate goes up, go up a little bit. One of the other things is, is a tax-exempt lease. And so if you've looked through the documents, this company has already appointed an assignee, and so that assignee will benefit from purchasing this lease as a tax-exempt instrument, and that actually kind of helps the rate go down a little bit. So all in all, and looking at this, and looking at all the various requirements, and the attorney has examined, and we did change the venue from the state of New York to the state of Texas, in case there's any kind of issue that would involve other attorneys. And then we have checked with our insurance, which is the Texas Municipal League Intergovernment Risk Pool, and they are able to satisfy the insurance requirements that the company's requiring. And Public Works expects delivery on the truck late April or first part of May. And so this company, if you approve the lease, will escrow those funds to pay the vendor at the time that we actually receive delivery of the truck.
Counsel, do you recall, I mean, there was a, that budget year, you know, prior to us doing the budget, in the course of developing the budget, we went through the exercise of examining, do we buy this vehicle, or do we lease it? And there were distinct advantages, I don't know, would you, do you want David Rogers to recap the event, why we chose to lease rather than buy? Okay, you probably recall those things. All right, very good. But there is something that Ms. Lamb said that I want to clarify, take our opinion, is, Ms. Lamb said, if in coming years, that, say, development doesn't happen, and we decide we don't want to pay for this truck or can't pay for this truck, that situation will not occur, because our budget has been developed on the resources we have on the ground today, which includes the revenue base we have on the ground today. So no, nothing is hoping for the future that it happens so we can pay for something we're obligating today. That does not exist. So I just want to give you that confidence, that we, if what you agreed to today, the resources that there are in place to continue to make your obligation.
And that is correct, Mayor. I was just using that as an example. That language is in there so you don't bind future councils. And, and it, I'd use it as an example just to show you how to the lender, there is a little And I'd use it as an example just to show you how to the lender, there is a little bit of risk in this market because of that. So, yes, we certainly intend to fully fund the lease.
Any questions, Counsel? Or do you go into your discussion?
I just have one question, if I can, Mayor Holsey. And again, it goes back, I think I read in there, yeah, I saw that we had the insurance, but also, we are also responsible for the maintenance and everything of this vehicle through this time period.
And I think there are some...
Mr. Rogers, did you come up and address that?
Do you want to describe that or...? Okay.
Ah.
Thank you.
Stephen, could you show the truck? Yeah. So just so we all remember what it looks like, this is the truck we were talking about. And so originally, we did look at a lease agreement that included a full maintenance of it. Well, the more we dove into what that would really look like, there was, there was way too much cost associated with what we were actually going to get. The truth is, I don't expect you to need any maintenance in the window of time that they're offering the free maintenance. The way that that would be structured is they would, basically, they would pay at their expense all the costs for extended warranties on the chassis and all the things that could go wrong. And so, I mean, they would cover bumper to bumper and every tire and every lug nut, but you wouldn't even really expect any tires in this timeframe. So, looking at that, it's way more cost-effective to pay for the actual maintenance you need, and that's the reason we went that direction. They did offer like an upfront buyout, so every five years you could switch in the truck, but you were paying a huge premium for what you probably weren't going to use. But looking at that, having them, now they are a local, they're out of Arlington, and so we have a local repair facility, and looking at that in any method, it would be cheaper to have them do the maintenance as needed, you know, with our budget of maintenance on. Is there any other questions about the function of the truck or...?
No, I've got a question, just in case. Dave, so this, I mean, $530,000 piece of equipment, do we have the personnel that's trained to operate it? And is there any training involved in the purchase of it?
There's, that was one of the other selling points that they made that we love, is that they will train any and all current and future employees as often as needed, and they will send a factory rep to do so. So before we ever even operate this the first time, there'll be at least a two-day training period where they will walk us through every inch of the truck and then take us out on site. They will be there as we operate, and they'll go through until we feel comfortable. And he said, I mean, he says literally, if it needs longer than two days, they will stay as long as it takes to get everybody trained. If we have a new person come in, they will come out specifically to train them. That way, we're not dependent on, you know, I mean, I've always thought with training, you know, you're lucky if you really get 70 to 80% of what the person teaching is. And if we're diluting that on each new employee, eventually the last employee got such a, well, they only got 70 to 80% of that diluted knowledge. This way, we get it directly from a factory rep, and they feel pretty confident in their training program. So we feel, we feel good that we'll have a good handle on it and minimize any kind of damage that could just from operator error.
Okay. These training records would be retained in personnel files. And I'm just saying that from, we've got a big piece of equipment, so if something happens out in the community, you know, if we get into a liability issue, you know, we're going to have training records on file that the personnel were trained on how to properly use the equipment.
Yes, they do provide a certificate. There won't be any kind of a credit, it'll just be through the manufacturer that they have trained each individual employee for. We will absolutely retain that in personnel file. All right. Thank you.
Mayor Holsey, one more question. I'm going to go back to the maintenance just one more time, and it's not, if we do experience a downtime, is, do we have any down backup for this? I would think that this is something that, pretty important, we want to make sure that we have.
Yes, so Kenlok does, they have a pretty large fleet of that, so they will have trucks, but, I mean, we're almost always there. There's no guaranteed 100% uptime. I even looked at that because they offered that in a lease, a lease purchase agreement that gave you that 100%. But even when you delve into that, you really had to be out for, I mean, it says 100%, but not really, and there's no guarantee that truck would always be there. But typically, there is a truck available during those downtimes, and they will fix as many things as possible, even on-site if we need it. But we don't expect to see those huge amounts. And there's lots of little things, they even send out, you know, regular reminders, you know, cold weather, that they send out updates going, hey, any of our owners, make sure you've ran through this procedure, call us if you're, you know, concerned that you've done this correction. And they're doing as much as possible, and that's one of the things we like about our relationship with Kenlok, is we have a local dealer that is readily available.
I have one other thing I can tell you about that sort of thing. One of the things is, with this type truck, now we actually have a truck that Trinity River Authority also has trucks like this, at Roanoke, all of our member cities of the Denton Creek Regional Plant. We haven't had a truck that we could ever be a backup for them with. This truck does meet those requirements, and they reciprocate the same way around. If they, you need one, if something's down, you need to have an emergency, they'll call and they'll either bring one of theirs, if they're in too busy, Roanoke, we can join in with Roanoke, we can join in with Northlake's getting one. And so that's another nice little thing about having a truck like this. Of course, we may get a call from TRA sometime and saying, hey, we need y'all to come out. And that happened. It just recently happened to TRA outside of Roanoke. They had a contractor who decided to cut through a 36-inch sanitary sewer main, and so they had Roanoke's truck, they had truck from Westlake, they had two of TRA's trucks. They brought in a fourth truck and a fifth truck out of their stuff down south, even up here to work, moving, hauling the waste around over to the plant to keep things going.
All the way up to a 42-inch sanitary sewer main.
Oh, my gosh. We don't have anything that big.
No. 27 is the biggest we've got.
What do you think's the biggest we'll ever have?
27, but that one's fixed to be TRA's problem still. Our should be 20, 21 to 24.
All right, then, Counsel. Any further discussion? I'm sorry, I had my mic off. Any further discussion, Counsel? Right, I will entertain a motion, please.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the master lease purchase agreement with NCL Government Capital for Backdoor 2100L Sewer Cleaner Vacuum Truck. Is there a second?
Mayor Holsey, I second that.
There is a second. Any further discussion, Counsel? If not, a call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Motion passes. Thank you, Counsel. Item 8G, discuss subdivisions ordinance regarding final acceptance requirements. Mr. Page.
Yes, and at this time, I would recommend that there be a motion for the Council to adjourn into executive session to discuss this item, 8G, as well as items 8H and 8I.
Yes, Mayor, I'll present a motion to move this to executive session.
Motion is made to adjourn to executive session. Is there a second?
Mayor Holsey, I'll second.
There is a second. All in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, Counsel, I suggest we take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 9:08. That's two minutes, I believe it is. And reconvene in the third room, please.
The time is 9:57 PM. And we will resume open session. All council members are present in the chambers. And we will take up with, uh... With regard to 10, consider and take any action resulting from the executive session. Within that, let's go to item 8B... Excuse me. Yes, item 8G, having to do with the discussion... Or the subdivision ordinance regarding final acceptance requirements.
Yes, may I say after discussion in the executive session, there's no action needed for item 8G?
Uh, motion has made no ad... Uh, action items needed for 8G, there's a second.
Mayor Holsey, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion passes. No action. 8H, uh, has to do with the, um, claim submitted by Michael and Tammy Goodwin, an amount of $3,800, uh, regarding, uh, some pothole damage of sorts. Um, is there a motion on that?
Mayor Holsey, I make a motion to deny the claims submitted by Michael and Tammy Goodwin in the amount of $3,836.
Motion is made to deny this claim, uh, submitted by Michael and Tammy Goodwin in the amount of $3,836. Is there a second?
Mayor Holsey, I second.
There is a second. All in favor? It unanimous? I still... Well, I say it is. I didn't see all those things, uh... Okay, I do now. Thank you very much. Motion passes. Item, uh, item 8I, uh, regarding the claim submitted by Tony Gilmore in the amount of $5,379.55. Okay, any discussion on that, council?
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city attorney to negotiate the submitted claim with Tony Gilmore up to $5,379.55.
Motion is made to, um, authorize the city attorney to negotiate settlement, uh, with Tony Gilmore in the amount of... Up to an amount of $5,379.55. Is there a second? There is a second.
I'll second.
There is a second. Any further discussion?
I... I just got a few points to make. Just... Just to make... Be clear, we're authorizing up to this amount. It doesn't mean you're gonna get this amount. It'll be whatever you negotiate with... With our attorney. It... Just to... Just to make it clear.
Very good. Uh, any further comments or discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It unanimous, motion passes. All right, council. Number 11, future agenda items due. Anyone have anything for a future, uh, agenda item?
There is none. Let's go to item 12. May I have a motion to adjourn? Mayor Holsey, I'm going to adjourn. Motion's made to adjourn. Is there a second?
Mayor Holsey, I second that.
There is a second. All in favor? It's unanimous, motion passes. Good evening, council. Thank you very much.